Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Board of Aldermen's meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd. First order business is minutes from the previous meeting of August 19. Move to approve?
Second.
Are there any corrections? Alderman Mattis.
The second to last paragraph where Alderman Whitcomb asked to refer the issue of pedestrian crossing to the Public Safety Committee.
Correct.
It was referred to the Traffic Safety Committee.
Traffic Safety Committee. Okay, we'll make that change. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are outside the rail. Is there anyone to address the Board on Matters not on the agenda? I don't see anyone. We are up to communications from the Mayor. Mayor O'Leary?
All set tonight.
All set, thank you. We do have two additions to the agenda. If you could please move that we have an installation of the buried conduits and wiring that is for Crescent Street for the Habitat for Humanity House, if we could move that to the agenda.
Second.
Any debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And the second is an executive session for pending litigation, which we could move to the end of the meeting.
So moved, second.
Any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are up to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Brennan Duffy, Director, RRA, recommendation to buy app funding Downtown Gentlemen's Salon. Welcome Brennan.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. So as you read in the memo that went out, the Downtown Gentlemen's Salon is expanding their operations. They're going to be extensively renovating what was formerly the local nightclub, just a door sewed down from their current location, and they are seeking some buy app assistance in their investment there. So Lori Lepena, the owner, had applied asking for $5,000 through the buy app program as a grant, and the RRA is recommending to the Board of Aldermen that that be approved.
Need a most? Alderman Tomlin?
I just wanted to say, I just have to abstain from voting on this just due to a conflict of interest.
Okay. Alderman Mattis?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis?
And I move that the Board approve the $5,000 grant from the buy app program for the Downtown Gentlemen's Salon.
Second.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Seeing Alderman or Mayor O'Leary?
Just real quick, I've had a chance to tour the inside of the facility, the old local, and got a briefing on what it was going to, what it's going to look like once the renovations are made. I think it's going to be an excellent addition to the downtown and to our business community. And also, I'll just note that in the memo, it says the creation of eight new jobs here in the city. I think that's noteworthy.
Correct. Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Says Chris.
If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you Brennan.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Barbara Spalding, RRA, resolution of the VCDP grant application, Rutland Permanent Supportive Housing. That was the public hearing that we just closed. What's your pleasure?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Motion to circulate for signatures.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Gillum, second by Alderman Mattis, to circulate for signature. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Barbara, anything you needed to speak to? Okay. All right, we're all set with that. Next, we have Barbara Spalding, RRA, municipal policies and code update. This is another circulation of signature. This is for, because there's an addition, Barbara, to the, to the language, I believe, you said.
Move to suspend the rules.
These are pages four through 11. We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. If, you may just have Barbara explain.
I just wanted you to know that the city attorney has reviewed this policies and codes update, and that the only additional code is the whistleblower protection code, which is a federal policy.
Okay.
And these have to be adopted by the city of Rutland in order to apply for and receive grants.
Just a question, that is page, on page six on the bottom, and then seven on the top. Correct that.
That's correct.
Two par, three paragraphs. Okay.
So do we have a motion to?
Motion to circulate for signatures.
Second.
Okay. Any debate on the motion to circulate the resolution for signature? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you Barbara. We are up to Commissioner Wenberg, request for referral meter upgrade project issues. Commissioner Wenberg.
Right there. You're up, my man.
This is the meter upgrade project issue.
Basically, it's a simple request for referral to committee. Like to have an opportunity to brief the Board on recent progress, I guess is a nice way to put it, and some of the issues that have come up more recently with the project. And I've gotten a commitment, working with the committee chair, to schedule this so that an appropriate representative or representatives of Fathom can be there to answer questions directly regarding their work and their, the issues that have come up regarding, especially regarding the most recent thing, which was the mailing of a number of bills that were never intended to actually be real bills, so.
Okay, so Alderman Clifford.
I move to refer to Public Works Committee.
Second. Any debate on the motion to refer? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
If I may, I'll get together with the Commissioner regarding, so we can get the representative there and in timely fashion be able to tell, ask everyone when they can make a meeting. Thank you.
Stay right there, because we're going to do, if we may, the installation of the buried conduit and wiring within the accepted city streets.
I don't know, this was sent, this came in today, and these things are usually pretty perfunctory, and this one more so than most. I don't know how many people have seen it, because it went out electronically. I do have hard copies here, if anybody would like them. It's very straightforward, they want to run a conduit to the house that they're building on Crescent Street underneath the sidewalk, so it'll be underground power from the pole that has been installed. And under our rules, they, they have to pay 24 cents a lineal foot, which comes to $1.20 in fees. And, but this way, we, we need to be able to monitor and keep track of, of everything that third parties bury in the right of way, especially anything like this, which in this case, it's a, you know, electrical service. So the ordinance requires Board approval, and we've, this is all good to go, and it's for Habitat for Humanity. As I said, they're not asking for a fee waiver, they've come up with a buck twenty.
So what's your pleasure? Alderman Mattis?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis?
And I move the Board approve the request for buried conduit at 120 Crescent Street.
Alderman?
Just noting that I'm going to recuse myself, I'm a member of Habitat's Board.
Okay. Anyone else?
It's not your house, you abstain.
He's abstaining because he's a member of the Board of Habitat. Okay, the motion is to approve, it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Supervisor Peters, Recreation.
Welcome.
Hi, welcome. Thank you. Just also a plug, our Go Play is out, I put some more downstairs, kind of flying off the shelves down there. So I'm here to do three things. The first one is the request for $13,850 to be taken out of the Giorgetti Fund for code updates and a suspension wallet at Giorgetti. I'm asking for the suspension of the rules.
This issue was in committee, well, quite a while ago. We talked about the code updates needed at Giorgetti. So what's your pleasure? Alderman Humphrey?
Move to suspend the rules and take this tonight.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Humphrey?
And I'll move to approve the requested funds from the, the $13,850 out of Giorgetti Trust Fund to cover expenses for code updates for a separation.
Second.
Okay, any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next.
Second is a request to, to have permission to sell assets, items from the Giorgetti Flipside Skate Park. Ask to suspend the rules.
Alderman Gillum?
Move to suspend the rules, to take the matter up tonight.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Gillum?
Move to allow the superintendent to sell assets at the skate park.
Second.
And money's?
Money returned back to her department, I believe.
The activities account.
Activities account.
Specifically Flipside.
The Flipside Activity Account.
And it's specific as to what equipment you will be selling?
Correct.
It's listed on the memo, and specific to that memo. Any debate?
Who seconded that?
I believe Alderman Mattis. Gillum, Mattis. Okay. Any debate on the motion to sell with the money going back to the Flipside Activities Account? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And what more we have?
Okay. So you should have the two-page proposal. I'm, I'm requesting for the three-year rental of CSJ Gymnasium, to refer to the appropriate committee for discussion.
Alderman Humphrey?
I move to refer to the Recreation Committee, please.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to refer to Rec? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So we'll be in touch with you once that committee chair schedules your meeting. I believe you had a met, a meeting already.
Yeah, I think that they're, we're working for Monday or Tuesday, and it will be at the CSJ Gymnasium.
Okay.
So we're hoping and inviting.
So note the posting when it does get posted for Recreation, it will be held at College of St. Joseph's Gym.
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I'm sorry, yes.
I should have mentioned this earlier, so I, I've spoken to Kim about this last week.
Yes.
And we discussed whether this would be more appropriate in Recreation Committee or the Community Economic Development.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's fine in either, but Rec is a good start for it, particularly because we'll be meeting at CSJ to discuss the opportunities for Rec.
We can always refer issues back to committee, other committees, if we need to, as we move forward. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to James Rotondo, City Engineer, and we have several requests here. Request for approval of Step Three of the Engineering Services Agreement versus East Creek Sewer Force Main Replacement Project.
Okay, so I do have three, Step Three Engineering Service Agreements that I'm looking for approval on. And all three of these, first item, item number one, are all related to Article Number One of the bond vote, and they're all associated with wastewater and CSO projects. And this is really the final step in all of these projects. The Board has already approved Step One and Step Two, and that was preliminary engineering reports and final designs, and now this is for bidding and for, and for construction.
Okay.
So again, the first one is the East Creek Sewer Force Main Replacement Project, and the actual agreement is in your packet. So what I'm asking for is, is approval of this agreement, which is with Weston and Sampson. It's for the bid phase and construction administration services for East Creek Sewer Force Main Replacement Project, in an amount not to exceed $143,030, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city attorney.
Okay.
So moved.
Well, we need to suspend the rules.
So I'm sorry.
Move to suspend the rules.
We have a second?
Quick enough.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, we're going to remain consistent and abstain from these.
Certainly, so we'll know Alderman Clifford's abstention. And we do, we have a motion, Alderman Whitcomb?
Move to approve the Step Three Engineering Services Agreement with Weston and Sampson for bid phase and construction administration services for the East Creek Sewer Force Main Replacement Project, in the amount not to exceed $143,030, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Any debate on that motion to approve? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is the anaerobic digester complex improvement project.
Okay, so this one, again, is with the, with Weston and Sampson Engineering. Again, it's for bid phase and construction administration services. Again, it's for the anaerobic digester complex, for an amount not to exceed $345,480, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city attorney.
Alderman Mattis?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis?
And I move that the Board approve the Step Three Engineering Services Agreement with Weston and Sampson for bid phase and construction administration services for the anaerobic digester complex improvements project, in an amount not to exceed $345,480, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Any debate on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And lastly, under this is the Northwest Neighborhood Sewer Separation Phase 1A.
Okay, so this engineering services agreement is with Otter Creek Engineering, and again, it's the bid phase and construction administration services. And this is for the Northwest Neighborhood Sewer Separation Project Phase 1A. And this would be in the amount not to exceed $194,805, again, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city attorney.
Alderman Mattis?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis?
And I move that the Board approve the Step Three Engineering Services Agreement with Otter Creek Engineering for bid phase and construction administration services for the Northwest Neighborhood Sewer Separation Phase 1A Project, in an amount not to exceed $194,805, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to approve?
From what we just talked about.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we are up to request for approval of Step One Loan Application Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan.
Okay, so we're requesting the Board to approve and circulate for signatures, the Step One feasibility and planning combined sewer overflow long-term control plan funding application. And it's written for an amount not to exceed $300,000. And this is based upon our 1272 enforcement order, which was issued May 8th, 2018, which requires that all remaining CSOs in the city of Rutland are brought into compliance with the CSO rule and Vermont water quality standards. So toward that end, the city is required to complete a long-term control plan for CSO abatement by May 8th, 2020.
Okay.
And I'd like to add that there's, there's a great funding opportunity right now, and it's really first come, first served. There's about $500,000 out there in, well, it's really loan forgiveness, but it's really a grant. And basically, the way it's been explained to us, it's 50% loan forgiveness on the first hundred thousand dollars, or excuse me, 100% forgiveness on the first $100,000, and 50% on all additional amounts. So in our case, if we actually spend $300,000, we might be in line to get $200,000 in loan forgiveness.
Excellent.
So it's a great deal, so time is of the essence, and I'm asking the Board again to approve it tonight, so that we can go ahead and submit our application and apply for that loan forgiveness.
Alderman Whitcomb?
Question. You say might be eligible. What are the statistical chances you think we can get that?
Well, talking to the state, I mean, it sounds, you know, it sounds like a sure thing. A couple of applications have already been sent into the state by other municipalities, so it's really that finite amount of money. If somebody sent one in today and we aren't aware of it, you know, it may, it may be gone. But I, I'd say it's highly unlikely. My contact at the state said that they would have contacted me if, if, you know, if it got to a point where we may lose, or not, not be able to acquire that loan forgiveness. So I think it's, it's highly probable that we'll get it. If we don't get it, again, this is just an application, we don't have to, you know, follow through with it. This really protects us, this, this gets us, our name in there, and it's a placeholder for getting that loan forgiveness.
Thank you.
Move to suspend?
Alderman? Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Your pleasure?
Move to approve and circulate for signatures, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, Step One Combined Sewer Overflow Long-Term Control Plan Funding Application in the amount not to exceed $300,000.
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion to approve and circulate for signature? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, when we pass this around, they're going to need to print and sign where their names located.
Okay.
If you just let the Board know that, that would be great.
State document.
So what are we doing here, Henry? We're going to print here?
So the paper's coming around, it's got the one that says signatures here, print your name there, as far as that goes, and your name is listed. So if you just kind of look at the document, it'll explain where to sign and then where to print, right next to your name.
So I just did it.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is request for approval of ESA Otter Creek Engineer Contract Continuation, Park Street and Church Street Culvert Design Update and Construction Phase Services.
Okay, so again, this, this is the last item I have on the agenda, and this is another ESA, basically a Step Three for the, again, the Park Street and Church Street Culvert Replacement Projects that were, again, part of the bond that was approved in March. We sent, if you remember, we sent out, or you gave us approval to send an RFP out to pick out a consultant for design of the culverts. And we've received those proposals, and we're going to start reviewing them, we'll probably be back here this month, or at least next month, when we select a, select the consultant. But these two, these two locations, Church Street and Park Street, really were designed back in 2011 by Otter Creek, and the actual drawings are in your package. So an RFP didn't really fit this situation. Basically, the drawings were done, the only thing is they're outdated, you know, they're, they're eight years old. And in the case of Church Street, the precast arch that was designed is no longer made. So the consultant needs to go back, modify the drawings, and prepare them for bidding and for construction. So really, there's only one consultant that can do that, and that's the original consultant. So that's why I'm asking that, for this ESA, that, that you approve the ESA with Otter Creek Engineering for the design update, and then in addition to that, we added the bid phase and the construction administration services for the Park Street and Church Street Culvert Replacement, in an amount not to exceed $86,870, and again, in the final form, to be approved by the city attorney.
Okay.
And the timing on this, we'd like to get it approved tonight and get the design work done. Bid it this, this winter, and these two projects would be built next construction season.
Move to suspend the rules, take the matter up tonight.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Ryan?
I move that the Board approve the ESA with Otter Creek Engineering for design update, bid phase, and construction administration services for the Park Street and Church Street Culvert Replacement Project, in an amount not to exceed $86,870, with the final form of the ESA to be approved by the city attorney.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to approve? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Anything else, you?
That's it?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we are on to reports of standing committees. We have Alderman Mattis, Charter and Ordinance Sign Ordinance. Alderman Mattis?
Thank you. The Charter and Ordinance Committee met on Monday, August 26th. Committee members present were Alderman Chris Attori, Bill Gillum, Melinda Humphrey, and myself. Others present were Alderman Matt Whitcomb and Tom DePoy, Mayor O'Leary, Tara Kelly, Bob Pelletier, Dave Kopic, Dave Cooper, Brennan Duffy, and Gordon Ricillo. The meeting convened at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss how internally illuminated signs would be regulated under the proposed new sign ordinance. In general, the committee agreed that the city should not prohibit internally illuminated signs in any business district. There was also general agreement that residential districts should have some kind of regulation, either a flat prohibition on such signs, or rules about timing, for example, that the lighting should be shut off after a certain time or after business hours. The reason for this would be to preserve the character of residential districts, protect residential property values, and protect residents from undue glare from nearby signs. This concern also extended to businesses, to business properties that border on residential districts. For all districts, the committee was interested in ways the city might regulate the brightness and visual impact of internally illuminated signs, including electronic message boards. Also, the state has restrictions on flashing signs that we need to be aware of. It was agreed that we would ask local sign professionals for specific kinds of information about best practices for lighting, lumens, graphics versus text, number of colors, et cetera. If they agree to meet, one or two committee members will join that meeting along with Tara Kelly, and bring the information back to the full committee for discussion. The issue remains in committee, and this report is for informational.
Great, thank you. Any questions to Alderman Mattis in regards to her report? Seeing none, thank you. Are there any other standing committee reports? Select committee.
If I may?
Alderman Clifford?
I don't know if anyone is aware, but Jim McGorman, I'm speaking on behalf of the Board as the representative to the Rutland Colli, Solid Waste District. Jim McGorman is going to be resigning soon. And just to let you know that there will be, there's a process going on right now to seek, to seek a new director, and it's going to be proposed, well, the Executive Committee will be handling that. Alderman Gillum and I are on that committee, so I'll be able to update you as things happen.
Okay, great.
Update you.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Any other representatives? If not, we're on to petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. We have the special events permit request, Rutland Rec Halloween Parade for October 26, 2019, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. What's your pleasure? Alderman Mattis?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Alderman Mattis?
And I'm excited to move that we approve the special event permit application for the Halloween Parade to be held on October 26th, from 5:30 to 8:30 downtown.
Second. Alderman Whitcomb? Okay. Any debate on the motion to approve the special events permit for the Halloween Parade? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have nothing under the Board of Control Commissioners, right? Okay. We are under unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Seeing none. Miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Alderman Attori.
Thank you. At the last RRA meeting, Brennan Duffy had announced that he was working on a Opportunity Zone prospectus.
Correct.
And there's an article in about it, in a BT Digger, about it. And when I asked him what the projects were that he was putting in there, it was the CSJ project-
Excuse me.
-and the Berwick Hotel site. I didn't know, I guess he has a meeting, and the mayor could speak to this, in a couple weeks, I believe, to present that to the statewide, statewide board. And I didn't know if that encompassed enough of what this board was interested in for opportunity zones. I assume everybody's familiar with the idea of opportunity zones, you're taking capital gains and putting it, investing it in somewhere and seeing a return, et cetera, et cetera. It's a, it's an opportunity for communities like ours to get some really good investment in some projects. And so I didn't know if there was anything else that this board wanted to kind of take back through the representative about that. I do feel that, you know, the RRA is the economic development entity of the city, but we as the board have, have a role to play in that as well. And so I just wanted to make sure that that, if there was anything that wanted to be carried back from this group, that that made it to the representative. Kind of as a corollary, they had commissioned a housing study recently, and one of the things that had said in there is if we want downtown housing, we need to be creative in our investment opportunities, our investment structure, and really reach out and make things happen. So I guess I am disappointed that there wasn't downtown housing that was put into the Opportunity Zone prospectus. I can carry that to Brennan no matter what, but I wanted to make sure that this board was aware that that is going out, and if there was anything that they wanted to communicate to the representative.
So, if I may, what is the timeframe that, that projects have to be? Is there a timeframe? So you have an opportunity to refer to committee, if you so choose, and, and have that discussion with Brennan, and any other members of the double RAA. That's an option.
I guess I was thinking, I mean, the RRA meeting's always there, it's always public, anybody can participate or send, you know, things through the, the board rep.
Yeah, that's fine.
I didn't know if we need to have another committee, but I wanted to make sure-
Okay.
-you know, the minutes that we get are about a month afterwards, and so I just want to make sure that this, that this board had an opportunity to voice anything to either Brennan or Alderman Whitcomb.
And actually, if I just speak to that really quickly, please do reach out to me, because I'd be happy to bring it back to the next meeting. But I don't know if people are aware that the majority of Rutland qualifies as an opportunity zone. Essentially, everything except for what's Ward 1 is within that. And this really can be anything, and this is an excellent way to potentially bring in outside capital investment, get it into our city, and really start pushing revitalization. So there is really no bad idea. If you think of something, please forward it to me, and I'm happy to bring it back.
Alderman Ryan.
Yeah, I have a question maybe for the mayor around the HR position. I just hadn't heard anything regarding, there was an interim person and what the status is.
For the human resource position, what the status is of that?
Yes, absolutely. So as you know, Jody Briel had stepped up to work part-time, and to get us through the transition. We'd gone through a couple of interviews, and in both those instances, it didn't, it didn't look like it was going to be a good fit. So actually, we sat down and had a discussion with Jody, and she has decided that she's going to stay full-time. And so it's just barely getting started now, in her full-time status.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Seeing none. If not, we need a motion for executive session regarding pending litigation.
So moved.
Second. Matt will read us the magic words.
Unfortunately, we don't get off that easy. So it's a motion, or at least I don't get off that easy to read. Motion to find the premature general public knowledge regarding both probable and pending litigation, to which the city would be a party and is a party, would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will divulge the city's strategy in such probable and pending litigation, and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved.
Second. Any debate on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Our second motion.
Second motion is to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the city attorney, commissioner of public works, treasurer, and mayor, to discuss probable and pending litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313 A1E, and Title I, Section 313 A1F.
So moved.
Second. Any debate on the motion to enter executive session, and why? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll just stand down until we clear the room.